Councilmember LaBaron. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Mayor Portem Gasteiz.
Here.
And Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
I would like to ask Mayor Portem Gasteiz to leave us in a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Uh, thank you. Um, do not have any presentations tonight. And so we will move on to our general public comments portion of the meeting. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may express their concerns not pertaining to any items on the agenda tonight. Please note that, according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with speakers and/or the topic could be brought to the city council for consideration at a future date. Further, we will use municipal code tractor two point one four point one five zero. All remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not, and not to any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium to begin speaking. I'll take a look at the speakers here if we have any speakers left. First, we have Donald Ward, followed by Richard Gold.
Donald Ward. I started telling you through the committee when Mr. Tomlin was the first mayor of Lemon Grove, well, he was last term. And that was in all kind of, most of the government, I believe, was. State people need to get their, they're coming to see you or send it. I don't care what the state needs to come in, but you've got all the Democrats. Waiting for their handout. My list. And other actors that we're going to make sure that Sandang approves. Because it's all marching not steps with him. He spends it with, uh, Sandang Guard every three weeks all the time. That's what they do. And then this mayor, why can't you take your time off in your city job to walk a couple blocks to the Sandang? Is this too far to walk? Can't you ask for a vacation time? The meetings don't last that long. And you can't really depend on your attempts to go in for you. Uh, unless they can make arrangements to show up and stay for the entire meeting. If they can't make arrangements, then they shouldn't be going. And the Sandang thing is much a crap anyway.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard Gold, followed by Almer Garcia. Garcia.
Thank you, John Wood. You're always entertaining. Um, my name is Richard Gold, seventy years old. I'm honored to be a veteran of the United States Army. I've been on the honor system since two years now. I have never had more trouble with the city council than I've had with this one. I can't believe you guys. I just wanted to let you know, I have no criminal record, none at all, none at all. If you guys accuse me of being a criminal of being suspect. Of you allowing me to hook me in jail for one hundred thirty-seven and a half years of lying. Of you finding me two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for a simple vehicle of eight inches. I am a community activist because you have picked the wrong guy. Before we give you an update, if you've got an email that's been sent here, question. Sixty-fourth and Eleventh, and I'm on Street five hundred and sixty-seven miles. Anybody up on the city council done that? Anybody up in this area? Anybody over here? Anybody? Does anybody have the stink apathy to even donate blood? We always need blood. I'd encourage anybody to join the guardian circle where I am at the blood bank. To donate blood. People need it. Be apathetic to your citizens. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have Tamla Garcia, followed by Jeff Galford.
My name is Almer Garcia. And I have two girls ages of six and seven, which go to the monitoring scheme elementary school. We live across the street and I came today because it's, I feel like it's no longer safe for us to even walk across the street to the school. Um, I came today to talk about the speed limit and if there's anything or any way something could be done to slow by the cars that are driving through there. I have witnessed multiple accidents dropping off and walking away from the school, just crossing the street. I feel like people go way too fast and nothing is being done. Um, I've already called the school about the accidents, see if they can contact you guys in any way. There's something could be done. My kids don't even want to cross the street to go to school anymore. They're wanting to drive, which is, you know, it's not needed, it's really, it's just across the street. I feel like we really need to do something because we've had multiple accidents, even like further down the street on Massachusetts where people have literally died. Um, due to how speeding is and stuff like that. And I know people jaywalk and stuff, but it's just a matter of speeding. Just no one slows down, even if there's a person holding the stop sign, they go over them, like they'll go around them and it's, it's not safe for anybody. The only time it's, it's doable is when there's an actual sheriff there, like monitoring. And I know it's not possible to be there every day, all day, you know, just watching out, just taking care of us. If there's something that could be done to help us out, as parents at least, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next, we have Jeff Galford, followed by Arthur Green.
Uh, I'm Jeff Galford. I'm, uh, the head of the head of the elementary school of Monterey. Do you hear me? Alright, my name is Jeff Galford and I'm speaking on behalf of Monterey Elementary. A lot of my athletes that coach baseball, uh, they're at school. Uh, it's a real concern of a lot of the parents. Um, I also jog in that area too, so I've been in the area on Cars Quiet Live during school after school. Uh, one thing is, um, coming from that's a little part there too, is a hazard coming out from making a left turn there too. So I think, I think there needs to be some type of change as far as that is going to be there. Uh, because it's, it's going to be a time where somebody could get hit and maybe not be put to school, uh, maybe a parent, uh, but I think it should be addressed. Uh, because that would be something, uh, I know, um, when you see one of these kids that goes to school, uh, their parents speak about, um, like the concerns without, you know, if they almost hit. Uh, that's the other one thing, uh, very hard, because that would make you see that, um, a child that interacts with people like over something, it could be simple as changing the traffic pattern. Um, or doing something, all the cure to something to, uh, help assist with the, like an issue now. And a couple months, I'm sure you're being up here talking about the same thing. Up here now, uh, speaking on, uh, the school myself, so I think something, uh, needs to be addressed. I'm not sure what the answer is, I think the only way to answer is, uh, questions. Um, but I think it's, it's at no point where I think we can move on.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Arthur. Next, we have Arthur Green, followed by Eric Wyatt.
Do you guys hear me? Uh, evening, council, mayor. My name is Arthur Green and my son attends Monterey High Elementary School. He's six years old, uh, he's in first grade and we literally live right around the corner off of the tab, live off Hughes. And. And I'm here tonight to be this week in jail and remind council of make safety improvements in front of Monterey High Elementary School. Some type of traffic enforcement, whether we stop signs. Anything to help? I do want to thank Lieutenant McLeod for actually having an officer. Um, the two times that I have been there within the last month, I've seen one present, but again, that is not enough. It is very dangerous. The thing is, I'm not able to take my son to school. I made sure, um, my son is being called. Uh, no matter what I'm doing at work, I might step away, take a phone call from my wife. Um, and it is very, it's very scary when you walk through there. So I know some of the council has attended, uh, but it's, as I said, speeders do go through there every day. This is no doubt that a hazard to, you know, for my son and my wife and all those who use that crosswalk every day. We need to address this and make safety improvements on campus drive. Something needs to be done to slow down juvenile drivers. Alert them that there, there is a school crosswalk that can force them to yield. This needs to be done as soon as you're done with further, you know, charges. We need to take swift action if you proactively. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Eric Wyatt. Followed by Leonardo Nardin, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name.
Um, I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Uh, my name is Eric Wyatt and I am a registered nurse that lives here in Lemon Grove. Uh, as of December, I have owned a home here in Lemon Grove and the community and neighbors have welcomed me, which I appreciate very much. I've, previous to this, I was in La Mesa. Um, I live on Los Enceldores, which is off Ildica Street. And as I'm sure this council is aware, Ildica Street here in Lemon Grove is a, is a required drive for over one hundred residents to get to and from their residences. Um, currently, the street is largely undrivable because of potholes, deterioration, and road loss due to high travel. I know that the city council is aware of many projects and that. Um, I'm asking this council to consider the street to be included in any future improvement project. I encourage the city to conduct its own assessment to determine when the street can recently be repaired. And that is simply the only reason I wish to address you tonight. Uh, before I, in my remarks, I want to acknowledge that, um, any city, including this one, uh, has multiple demands and responsibilities that stress resources and compete for attention. So I know that it's easy to ask of me, but simply asking does not mean that things will get done. I respect whatever process the city has in place for addressing my concerns. I also want to acknowledge that I'm new to the city. And it may appear selfish to move here and immediately have demands. Uh, however, I do plan on contributing to this community, not just asking what it can do for me. Though I would share that I'm, I'm sure I'm not alone in that specific concern. Um, I thank you all for your time and for your dedication to the city and for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Leonardo Nardin, followed by Dylan. Okay, could be Leonard. Nardin?
Honorful comment.
Oh, but thank you so very much. I did apologize in advance for saying the name wrong. Can you say one more time please?
Honorful comment.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Honorable Chair of the Senate of the House. I hope I can mention at the last city council meeting that adjustment for sewer fees based on water use records for single-family residential users were considered. I explained I was using an average of fifty gallons of water per day and I was a new assigned code that would have a three and a half to four times more sewage flow for water consumption. This is not an anomaly. The twenty twenty-one Department of Water Resources and State Water Board report of the California Legislature notes that the current statewide median indoor residential water use is forty-eight gallons per gallon per day. For benefits from single-family residential rate adjustment, there would be a portion of the one thousand five hundred seventy-one person households that do not live in apartments. It is a percentage of the three thousand seven hundred seniors living in Lemon Grove. Nearly one third of all seniors live alone, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. This would be one thousand two hundred twenty-one seniors living alone in Lemon Grove. There are one thousand five hundred seventy-one person households, so this means seventy-eight percent of one-person households are seniors. That's a big number. That's like four out of five. Uh, this is important because you cannot have a special use program like San Diego Gas electric bill program and the advanced senior discount or silverback program. Sewer fees cannot be used for special purpose programs. You can have fair and equitable sewer rates based on adjustment used in water use records. Do not ask those least able to pay the shoulder disproportionate percentage of costs to operate the sewer system. Let staff know if you agree with adjustment, there's a fair and equitable solution for the unintended consequences of flat rate billing. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Dylan, followed by Damian.
Uh, good evening, mayor, council. My name is Dylan Rapp. Uh, I'm a junior in high school. This is my first time speaking to you. Uh, I wanted to ask the city what you can do to educate teenagers like me about the harm of their use. Especially, especially in marijuana. The truth is that most teens think marijuana is safe to use. You see it being sold in retail shops and customers coming and going. Advertisements of pretty colorful colors and even desserts like cookies and brownies aren't useful. The common misconception is that it can couple with depression and anxiety, something which many teenagers struggle with. I've seen how devastating this trap can be. When I was a freshman in high school, a friend of mine died by suicide unexpectedly. He started using marijuana in middle school and continued using it more heavily during the shutdown of COVID. He was a funny outgoing guy who wanted to take something to help mask the anxiety and depression. As he became addicted, his depression only worsened. Last school year, the U.S. Surgeon General David Murphy came to San Diego to speak directly to teenagers in high school regarding mental health. He stated that educating teenagers on representation, particularly marijuana, is key to their mental health. He also said that one in three male high school students in half of the female students reported feeling a feelings of persistent sadness and hopelessness. More than six thousand six hundred Americans between the ages of ten and twenty-four died by suicide in Arizona. A fifty-seven percent increase from twenty eighteen. Many teens are self-medicating with marijuana to treat their anxiety and depression and in reality, it's only making it more worse. Worthly acknowledging that marijuana destroys the developing brain. It's upsetting that my peers have such an easy access to it and that the advertising around it tells us that we're used. I hope that the city can do better protecting things. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Damian, followed by Becky.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Damian Johnson. I'm a local nursing home administrator. Concerned for the well-being of my residents. I came tonight to share with you and all the residents information from a concerning study released by the UCSD School of Medicine titled Campus-Related Emergency Department Visits Among Older Adults on the Rise. The study identified a one thousand eight hundred and eight percent increase in marijuana-related emergency department visits among adults sixty-five years of age and older. The study highlights that marijuana use among older adults can lead to unintended consequences that require emergency care. Marijuana can slow reaction time and impair attention, which may lead to injuries. It can also increase the risk for psychosis, delirium, and paranoia, exacerbate cardiovascular and pulmonary diseases, and interact with other prescription medications. All such conditions only intensify the current difficulties my residents face. I recently received a notice at my care facility warning all administrators and tour nursing staff regarding this uptick in ER visits. And the warning signs of consequences from the use of marijuana products. This poses a great burden on nursing homes along with senior care facilities, while the nursing staff is already significantly down. Marijuana use among older adults significantly complicates and compromises the health of those vulnerable seniors. Educating seniors on marijuana consumption should be of the utmost importance and the city should bear this responsibility. These high potency THC products are, are not the fountain of youth. More importantly, they can complicate and/or compromise the health of seniors, which delicate or already compromised in the instance.
Thank you so very much. Um, we have Becky, followed by Dolores.
Good evening, mayor, Vasquez, and council. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a parent and a public health administrator focused on youth and drug prevention. Um, recently, um, I wanted to share some information with you that came out recently from the Department of Cannabis Control. Uh, parents are thrilled to hear this. There are. I'm sorry. There are some new regulations that the Department of Cannabis Control has put out, limiting flavors. Working okay? Okay. Um, limiting flavors being added to inhaled marijuana products. These new regulatory provisions became effective on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, almost four months ago. According to the Department of Cannabis Control, these new regulations limit substances that can be used to add flavor and to inhaled products. Including flavors that are attracted, attracted to children by masking the natural flavor and aroma of marijuana. This is a huge step forward in the right direction in efforts to prevent, to protect children and young adults from inhaled marijuana products. We, we've recently passed SB seven ninety-three prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco. It's encouraging that the DCC is now recognizing that marijuana is only following the tobacco playbook when it comes to hooking kids. I ask if you are aware of the new requirements of the DCC and if our local operators have been notified. How can the city help in education and ultimately enforcement of this new regulation? Manufacturing facilities have been instructed to immediately stop production of products that are not compliant with new regulations. And I have to ask if they are even aware of this. New regulations haven't received much attention and parents would like to see a similar response from the city as they did when seven ninety-three was passed. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Dolores, followed by Kathleen Whitett. Uh, thank you so very much. Next, we have Kathleen Whitett, followed by Teresa Rosier-Craft.
Good evening, Mayor Vasquez and council. My name is Kathleen Whitett. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with drug policy. And I came here tonight to share some of what those of us who have worked for years to prevent the initiation, use, and abuse of drugs among adolescents and young adults have learned. A recent UT article asks if the legal cannabis industry can be saved due to a glut of marijuana being grown in California. A better question is, why should it be saved? What if seven years of legalization? What have seven years of legalization brought us so far? The strategies for preventing drug abuse have been abandoned in favor of the industry's preferred harm reduction strategy, which is less effective, more expensive, and has a higher rate of recidivism, but doesn't cut into the profits of marijuana businesses. Predatory addiction industry strategies reach teens on social media with child-friendly flavored products and favorite knockoffs of their favorite candies. Addiction is an adolescent-onset disease, so with increased availability, access, normalization, and a perception, excuse me, of harmlessness, these high THC products launched many adolescents on drug journeys that often ended in opioid and fentanyl. Violent drug cartels south of the border moved to California, destroying sensitive habitats, poisoning wildlife, stealing and polluting groundwater, rivers, and streams. Cartel operators have been, have committed violence and murders throughout California. Recently, the DEA arrested local cartel members. Despite California's drought, food crops were replaced with hemp and marijuana, adding to the cost of availability of food. Nearly seven thousand more marijuana impaired driving deaths have occurred. While the industry profits are privatized, the associated costs are paid for by the public. Industry profits are used to lobby and influence political leaders to prioritize industry interests over public priorities. Increased drug use has led to increased emergency room visits, poisonings, mental health problems, vehicle work-related injuries, and homelessness. The State's Department of Cannabis Control claims a strong legal cannabis industry is good for all Californians, and it has spent millions of taxpayer dollars to support it. But so far, only the marijuana industry, its advocates, and politically compromised public officials have benefited financially.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so very much. And our final speaker is Teresa Rosier Profit.
Good evening. I hope each of you are truly listening to the people that have come before you this evening. These residents and family members that are coming to you about the calming of streets. It would be a shame if we had another death like Trayvon Harris on our hands because you did not listen and take action. May his soul and all the souls of the faithful departed rest in peace. Amen. Do not let another incident like Trayvon happen. San Diego was given forty-four trailers, and Lemon Grove was given two trailers. Where are our two trailers? I stood before you at the last city council meeting asking where these two trailers are, and no one has contacted me, responded, given me any communication whatsoever. Two trailers is a start for an unsheltered individual. We go out with the homeless outreach team weekly and see the homeless and help them. These two trailers could be their lifeline, and you refuse to communicate with regards to the two trailers that Lemon Grove was given. Where are they? I want answers. Don't tell me that somebody will get back to me because they don't. Not only I, but other residents want answers. We deserve answers. Your salaries are being paid from our tax dollars. You work for us. We want answers. These are facts. This is the data. Give us answers immediately, not six months down the road now. I will expect a call this week or next week. If not, there's going to be problems. I will contact the media immediately. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I want to make sure that while we have folks here in the audience, that some of the questions are addressed, because I think that data and facts is everything. And I know that there's been some misinformation provided here tonight, but this is an opportunity for you to hear it and to get it on the record. So I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Lydia Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address the parents here from Monterey Heights. As you know, we've been at the, we've been working on this issue for some time. In year one meeting early, we were going to have a report to council regarding some other items, especially the four-way stops that we talked about when we were out there when we saw this a couple months back. And also, I signed in today the purchase order to buy the speed limit signs, the desperate crossing signs. We had to go bid for that, and once we got the right bid in, we did that. So all of that is in the works, and that should be happening fairly short order. I will tell you that the signs are still on back order. We were trying to find a company that had signs in stock. Didn't quite get that company, but as soon as we get them, it'll be there. Come to the next meeting, we'll be talking about the crosswalks or the four-way stops. On the, um, on the resident that talked about the streets, we just updated our payment management program, or PMP, that really lists all the streets in the, in the city and then gives us a five-year schedule of completeness. That will be coming to the city council at a future meeting and also be part of our CIP or Capital Improvement Program. I encourage you to sign up for alerts. It'll be on the future agenda in which you can read it and participate yourself.
Thank you so very much. Moving on to our consent calendar, then we have a motion to approve.
Excuse me. Before we move forward with the consent calendar, I would like to ask if there are any conflicts regarding any of the items on the consent calendar at this time.
I do have a client with, with one of the items, and I believe it's an item that was going to be polled.
Is that, I believe I know what that is, the Mida final map?
Yeah.
You're within five hundred, the five hundred-foot radius, so we'll have to poll that item and have you recuse yourself at the time that that, that item is heard. Are there any other conflicts regarding anything else on the, on the consent calendar? I will, I will say to you that I've already looked into whether there are conflicts for Councilmember Snow, Councilmember Mendoza, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Rivera, and you are not within the radius of that project, so you don't have to recuse yourself from that item.
I would like to check in with you to see if we can go ahead and seek approval of the consent calendar minus one E at this time.
You can, yeah, you can do that and poll that, keep Councilmember Gasol where he is, and then when the item comes back, you, Mr. Gasol, will have to recuse yourself.
Thank you. I will add one E to the end of our agenda. And so with that said, we have approval of consent calendar, calendar minus item one E.
I'll, I'll do the approval.
Second.
Thank you. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Porter-Tan Gasol?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
That motion carries forward.
Thank you. Item number two is the Shop Local Digital Gift Card Program, phase two. I'll turn this over to our city manager, Lydia Rivera, to present the staff report.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to try and do two things at once, which I'm not very good at. We can do it in PowerPoint and talk in Zoom. So if the city council remembers, with overview of the Facebook program, if the council remembers, we, the city council approved a pilot program of the Community E Gift Card or Digital Gift Card Program that supports our local businesses with American Rescue Act dollars. The council started the pilot program at the end of November, and I am happy to say a mere three months later, we are nearly out of money of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars this program has on gangbusters with folks. And in a future slide, I have some slides to show you that. Days one of the digital gift card program was a dollar-for-dollar match, and in some languages, it's called buy one, get one free or BOGO, which means if someone purchased a hundred-dollar gift card, they automatically got another hundred-dollar gift card to spend. Those dollars can be spent only in Lemon Grove and only in the businesses that signed up to participate in this program. It is only exclusively open to small businesses and not open to franchise businesses. Unfortunately, these cards cannot be used at Home Depot or at Starbucks, which really weren't hurt during the COVID recession. And then our partners in this, and it was instrumental in making this program run smoothly, was HDL Econ Solutions, the GIFTI program itself, as well as the East County Chamber of Commerce. All of these groups provided analytics, reports, and helped market this information to our residents and businesses to sign them up. So I want to share with you the analytics of the first phase of the digital gift card program. If you can see, I hope these numbers are not too hard to see, but if you look at the first bar, this is November twenty-second to November twenty-eighth, that's when we started the program. And if you look at the small bar in front, or the lighter orange bar, that is the gift cards that were purchased. So at the first week, we had twenty-one hundred gift cards value purchased compared to the ninety-six hundred of value of cards that were purchased by, you remember that? Twenty-one hundred was the BOGO, and ninety-six was the amount purchased. Now, I want to remind the council that as part of this program, this was free to businesses to sign up, so all of the costs were covered, businesses that signed up, which is mastercard costs, that was built into the program, so you'll see that number in those numbers as well. And, and as you can see, as the program hit and as we started moving forward through the holiday week, the holiday week, the program got more successful. It took a little dip during the end of the holiday season, but as you can see, it ramped right back up, especially during the Fourth of July holiday, or excuse me, the Valentine's Day holiday. And this is really hard to see, and I apologize, I should have used better colors. But what this is, is business, business aims by redemption. We have twenty-two businesses to date. There is one business that's blank, and that is a business that went out of business at the beginning of the year for reasons unknown to myself. But we have a range of businesses that have done this. I will name off some. Triple-A Imaging, Grand Pizza and Deli, Lido's, Elevated, Onyx Motors, San Diego Pet Supplies, New Apple Repair, Hamlet, Giurizino's, Besse's Wine Bar are all part of our program participants. I will share with you that the largest amount, and he's done his own marketing, in Onyx Motors, and as part of this program, they have received about twenty-nine thousand dollars of redemptions from the gift cards alone, which is a phenomenal amount of money to support a minority-owned local business, as well as some of our smaller businesses like Price Bookstore. So Price Bookstore is right on Lemon Grove Avenue, and they've signed up, and they've been able to get a pretty robust redemption as well. And this is what our, our Lemon Grove GIFTI page looks like. So it is, this page is actually supported by the GIFTI Digital Merchant Group, and this is what folks see when they come to our landing page. They're able to purchase any of the denominations. It is a Shop Local program. If you've seen our digital billboard, we have our Shop Local program, and we send hopefully reminders on our social media about the digital gift card program, both eliciting more small businesses to join as well as having residents buy gift cards. So I'm here tonight, by way of that long intervention, I'm here tonight to talk to council and get your feedback on phase two of this digital gift card program. Is this a program that we would like to continue? And if so, do we maintain in the heat of buy one, get one free promotion that we currently have in phase one? Or do we change that promotion to something like a fifty, fifty percent, eighty percent, seventy-five percent, whatever the council wishes, wishes? An example that is up here is a fifty percent. They purchase a hundred-dollar gift card, they get fifty dollars from free, opposed to the one-on-one that we currently have. And the other aspect is, we're, right now, we have the limit on, you don't have any limit on denominations, and I can tell you the most popular denomination is a hundred and fifty dollars, and they get a hundred and fifty-dollar gift card. In some of the, the community programs around the state, they limit, say, the one hundred and fifty-dollar gift cards available, and after that's depleted, it moves on to the net. We could, we could take a look at that kind of program restriction to allow our hundred and fifty dollars to go a little further than, than almost three months. And then lastly, in your agenda, the stuff, stuff is recommending that we allocate an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act to continue this program and then continue to renew the contracts for HDL Econ Solutions and the East County Chamber of Commerce to help us continue to move this program forward, especially with merchants' marketing and analytics. And both of those contracts will be within the city, the city manager's signing authority, which is under thirty thousand dollars. And with that, I will answer any questions council has. One thing I did forget, I'm going to back up. On the digital gift card page, if vendors, if small businesses want to sign up, they sign up digitally, they have a form that they fill out, it gets sent off to GIFTI, they make sure it's not one of the restrictive businesses. So for example, our marijuana businesses are restricted, they're not allowed to be part of this program. Liquor stores are not allowed to be part of this program. Really want to restrict it, really support small businesses that bring benefit back to the community. So all they have to do is sign up. Once they're approved, they get sent a three-cent digital gift card, and they get to keep that three cents, and that will enroll them in the program. They get to populate their name, and although I don't have a screenshot of this, if you go into the page there, you can see a map of all of the businesses of where the GIFTI gift card is accepted. Now, I will go back to my recommendation and answering any questions that council has. Oh, wait, and one thing, I do want to point out at the dais is Rick Wilson, the CEO and president of the East County Chamber of Commerce, really wanted to be here tonight, but it's his daughter's seventeenth birthday, so he sent a letter and said, supporting the program. And from what I understand, there are copies of the letter on the table for the public to view. Before we get to questions, I do want to check in with our city clerk to see if we have any secret slips regarding this particular item.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. And now, I will check in with our councilmembers to see any questions of staff. Just please remember that there is two questions, and you will be able to ask those two questions. And we'll do a second round of questions as well, and you can provide your comments. And I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
So the original agreement with HDL was an amount not to exceed $12,500. So would we... Are staff suggesting the same agreement with them to continue the program with the same goal? That is correct. Since it's already up and running, it wouldn't be that expensive because they don't have to do any of the backend building. So it would be much smaller. And I told them that we will work on $5,000 agreements until I get to the $30,000. And I do review their work, and I do review the invoices. And we have an analyst that does all of the analytics, and then we have a marketing specialist that works directly with us. And then, as far as the chamber, you know, I think, yes, keep them involved. But, you know, most of their work is done upfront also. There are, of course, some businesses that they could still continue to reach out to and get signed up, especially if we have any... We have some new businesses that are coming, maybe opening up in Lemon Grove. And could you remind me, what is our agreement with them? And what are you proposing the continuing agreement with them to be? So our initial agreement with the East County Chamber of Commerce was actually to be our person on the street and talk to businesses one-on-one about this program, as well as use their particular business list to advertise this business, this program to businesses, not necessarily the community to sign up, but businesses to be participants in this. And they have done exactly that. It's a small amount of money. Mr. Wilson is only paying me for time and materials. So we have a contract, it is existing contract with them, for $2,500.
Thank you. Next, we have councilmembers now.
I was talking to a couple of community members, and one of the things that they found difficult was for our senior citizens and people who have limited access to the internet, is there an easy way for them to be able to access this program and be able to participate in it?
I double-checked with HDL and Gifty. This is a fully digital program, and it is intended to be digital on a phone or a tablet, if you have that. There is no hard cards. And that's one of the... What was one of the nice things is it didn't lose the environment with digital plastics. So no, there is not an alternative way unless you have a smartphone that you can sign up via the smartphone and then have your sort of digital indisha on your smartphone to use it, much like you do with Google Pay or something like that. But we can... I can ask them if there's any... If they develop any alternatives, let us know right away.
Yeah, if there might be a customer service line or something like that, where people who are flying could be able to call in and get support. That's all I have for now.
Thank you so very much. Mayor Protem Gassil?
Thank you. Yeah, it seems to me that the key thing to consider is what the prospects are for either new customers or new businesses in the program. The purpose of the programs, I understand it, is to bring customers to the businesses. And I think that's a really good idea because a lot of people probably got out of the habit of shopping at these places during the pandemic. And there's also probably people that don't even know about these businesses that will make a habit of shopping there once they learn about them. So I guess my question would be, what are the prospects for new customers and developing the habit of going to the businesses, or possibly for new businesses joining the program? And when we look at what kind of plan to go with, I think we'd want to go with something that would continue to draw people, but also extend the life of the program because we might need to keep it going for a significant amount of time in order for people to develop the habit of going to the businesses. So I'd be interested to know what, you know, which kind of formula we think would be best at drawing people. And I'm kind of thinking maybe the... Instead of buy one, get one, maybe get $150 in value for $100, something of that nature would allow the program to go longer and probably would attract just as many people, I'm guessing. Because that would be the logic if we tried something like that. So I think that's two questions. Sorry if I couldn't raise this question.
Mayor Protem Gassil? Yes. I believe that you're correct. Extending the life of the program has interest in keeping new customers going, and customers then visiting those businesses that you've signed up. So depending on the percentage, we can do it... That was an 80% split that you looked at, or 75% split. Or, like I said, or a suggested example that I had up here is the 50% split of purchasing. I will tell you that, in fact, this weekend, we received two leads for businesses. And when we get leads for businesses, that means people that are signing up for the program say, hey, I want this business to be part of it. It goes to our HDL partners that then sends emails directly to those businesses so they can sign up. Once they get some sign up, and I do know our HDL marketing person, her name is Kristin Heinz. Ms. Heinz actually walks people through from the phone. If they're having a little bit of difficulty signing up as a merchant business, they'll get their three cents. She walks them through of purchasing the three cents, and now they're part of the program. So we're constantly looking for that. And then, those folks that buy the gift cards can only spend them in those businesses that sign up. So I know that there is interest in getting more businesses to sign up. Plus, we do have a few businesses that should be opening up fairly soon. And our small, family-run business, like the pending Pancake House. And they're one that we would be, you know, directly targeting to sign up for this program, to get people into the door, to ensure that that business is successful. The whole intent, as you said earlier, Mayor Protem, is to get people into the businesses so they can then experience the great coffee, the great food, the great services that all of our businesses have to offer. If I can get them in the door with some free money, it really is dependent on the business to sell them on everything else. I can't do that for them, but I can at least get people into the door.
Thank you so very much. There's one thing that I'd like clarification on because it was mentioned that I'm using a smartphone or tablet in order to participate in the program as a customer. But if someone does not have either one of those items, would it be possible for them to sign up simply because they have an email address? And they could go on any computer, go to the website, purchase the denomination that they would like to purchase, get the email, and then, once they receive their card via email, they can print that out and take it to the business? Is that possible?
Madam Mayor, you explained that process perfectly. And yes, that is absolutely possible. We've had that case where someone went to the library, had created a Gmail account, signed up for the program, then downloaded, and they had that piece of paper. That piece of paper felt very valuable, and they used that piece of paper to then go to the businesses.
So for anyone who does not have a smartphone or a tablet, there is still an opportunity to participate in the program. The other question that I have is regarding phase two. And my question is, in my mind, the way that I think of phase two is that for each individual, they could purchase a maximum of $150. Purchase the $150 could be a couple of $25 gift cards, maybe a $100 gift card, and another $50, or simply a $150 gift card, but that would mask out their portion of the program. Is it possible to implement that kind of program in phase two? And would it be easy for the company to track the amount of money so that, once they hit the $150 mark, then their participation in the program is complete?
Madam Mayor, I have to check with Gifty on that one. That's a sort of a complicated mathematics per email address. And if somebody wants to hedge it, they'll just get another email address to get more, which is why we're limited to two cards per email address. So someone can get two cards per email address. And it doesn't matter what denominations. They're limited to two cards for the BOGO. Now, you can buy 100 gift cards, but only two of them will get the buy one, get one free at our current phase. So in phase two, we could say it's limited to one gift card. Get the BOGO, buy one, get one free. Or keep it at the two gift cards, get some sort of gift card free, depending if you want it to be 80%, 75%, or we keep it.
Thank you so very much. We will do another round where we will all have two questions, but also to provide comments. And this will be our opportunity to tell staff what kind of program, if we are in support of this, that we would like to move forward with. So I will start with Councilmember Mendoza.
I don't think I have any more questions, but I just wanted to say I've used it and found it pretty easy to use. And it seems like the merchants have found it easy on their end, and they're very happy. The merchants I've used it with seem very happy with the program. So I really don't want to change it too much. So if we... $150,000 is potentially 1,150 gift cards being purchased. But there's probably more or less people actually using the program. And so since November, it's like in three months, we've almost completed it, but not quite. So there's still people, you know, there's... People still have an opportunity. We still haven't sold part of the gift cards. My husband keeps reminding me to get... That we need to get our second gift card before that money runs out. So I... My feeling is, I don't think we should change a thing. I think we should just keep it the way it is. You know, buy a limit to two, and buy $150, or $50, or $100, and get straight two for one. Councilmember Mendoza, you're correct. I get to see all purchases that come in, so I know the denomination. The most popular denomination, obviously, is the $150. But people are buying $25, people are buying $50. So it is around the spectrum. I will say that I didn't say this number earlier, but the number of buy one, get one free gift cards being issued as of 2/14 is 796. We have a total of gift cards purchased of 1,618. And I do know that some of those gift cards also included people buying multiple gift cards as gifts, and they don't get the buy one, get one free. That's why the numbers don't really quite double. And the value of both the purchase and the buy one, get one free, again, as of 2/14, is $193,310 going back into the businesses in Lemon Grove. You can already expect the businesses in Lemon Grove. The redemption value of that $193,000 is $122,000. There is some... There still is some money on people's gift cards that they can have to use.
Okay, and I just want a clarification regarding your thoughts. If you could just say it on the record again, Councilmember Mendoza?
I'm recommending that we keep it the same.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember Penn?
So I do have been able to use this program. I think it's been a big boost to the community, to the businesses, but also to the consumers and the families here who've been struggling with inflation costs. And so I think it's been very successful for that. We were able to volunteer at the food bank this last week. And there's still a lot of our community members who don't know about this program. And so I think doing the second round will give them the opportunity to pay in a program that will really help put more food on the table, while at the same time helping our businesses. This is one of my favorite programs that we've been able to rule out. I think the suggestion from the mayor on how to help people, you've got senior citizen friends who can log on, help them log on, and get out there and help your community members be able to take advantage of this program. And so my husband and I went out for Valentine's Day, and we were going to one of our favorite local restaurants here, and they were not signed up. And I just wanted to show you guys just how easy it is to get your favorite businesses on here. They don't have to wait for an invitation from the Chamber of Commerce or from our other partners. They literally can Google Lemon Grove gift card. Then it'll pop up, and then you just scroll to the bottom of it. At the very bottom, it'll say, "Apply for the businesses." And you click on that. Super easy, like, what's your name? What's the name of your business? What's your contact information? And that'll get them started down the road to be able to do that. And anyway, I think it was just a couple of days later, our favorite restaurant is now on there. And so I highly encourage the community to use this program. And I agree, I just love this buy one, get one free. I'm a frisky shopper myself, and I think it's done an excellent job of generating... I've been able to get people here from Loma and Tulavista and San Diego to come and hang out here because our money goes further. So I think it's a good program. I don't believe anybody changes. I would like to do a second round.
Thank you so very much. Mayor Protem Gassil?
I definitely want to continue the program. I'd be more inclined to do the buy one, get one half-off concept. And I think that's because, two considerations. One is that I want this program to last. It seems like it's taken a while for people to learn about it. There are still businesses, possibly, that might sign up. There are still people that don't know about it. And the longer the program is around, the more new customers will collect for these businesses. So if it's buy one, get half off, then it seems to me that the program would have twice as much light before all the money was spent. The other consideration is that if it's buy one, get one half off, then there's a little more consideration about the quality of the product and how it would be better, would be equal or greater value than other profitable products. And, you know, there's different ways of approaching things. Buy one, get one definitely gets people in the door, gets people interested, whether or not they're interested in the product and whether or not they're ever going to show up in Lemon Grove again. Because free will always be free. Whereas buy one, get one half off, it's going to... It's more targeted to people that might already be leaning in the direction of shopping in Lemon Grove, for people who are actually considering the value of the businesses, the value of the product. who are actually considering the value of the businesses, the value of the product. And it seems it's more likely to pull in a consumer that's going to be a consistent consumer, as opposed to somebody who's just jumping at the chance to get, uh, something that might just be a one-time deal, and they might not be interested, uh, after they, after the card is no longer there. So, I, I'm inclined, if I'm always the buy-one-get-half-off on the next one, kind of, kind of concept, um, but I definitely want to continue the program. And, uh, and my biggest concern is I want to make sure that we have a way of keeping it going long enough so that everybody finds out about Lemon Grove, and who's going to, and people get in the habit of shopping in Lemon Grove, which means the program has to keep going for just an amount of time, and we just pull in that.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so I am in support of keeping the program, uh, the way that it is. And, um, right, we have concerns about, uh, the longevity of the program. Simply, uh, reducing the maximum amount from one-fifty to a hundred dollars could help to, uh, lessen, um, the amount of time, um, that people could benefit from this program. Uh, so I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. But also, too, uh, I had the opportunity on Monday to speak on News Channel Eight about the program, but all the, uh, positive things that are taking place in the city. And as I actually mentioned, that where it is my opinion that we are like the, the best kept secret. Uh, and to me, uh, the best to be in the entire county of San Diego, perhaps I'm a little San Diego county, perhaps I'm just a little biased here, um, but, uh, there was a lot of interest in this program, and, and not by News Channel Eight, but also other cities throughout the state of California actually have, um, um, the mayor from the, uh, city of Delray Oaks reach out regarding the program, um, because it's something that they would like to replicate. In some of the local cities here within the county of San Diego, so I think the way that it is, it's good, but we would like to, one of the, the time that this program could be available for people, so that they're touched in a very meaningful way, would they simply reduce it from a hundred and fifty, the maximum, to a hundred dollars? Uh, and then that way, everything is consistent, and we can move forward with, with providing this opportunity to people, uh, who live, love, and support Lemon Grove.
Madam Mayor, may I offer sort of a slight, based on a, maybe a compromise? We can do Phase Two and keep it the same, buy-one-get-one-free, and expend seventy-five thousand of the seven thousand dollars as Phase Two. And Phase Three, we can then go to the buy-one-get-one-fifty-percent-off for the next seventy-five thousand. So then we have a Phase Two, but it still attracts folks, it's still status quo, and then, and then Phase Three will allow us to transition into the, and do some marketing around buying a gift card, get fifty percent off gift card. And, um, and then we put dollar math to it. So when the dollar math is expended for the initial seventy-five thousand on Phase Two, we will be moving into Phase Three. Today, I get, I get, uh, reports on a daily basis on how much money has been expended on the buy-one-get-one-free. When we move into the next phase of seventy-five thousand dollars, we can move into Phase Three, where then it's a percentage, again, to continue that program along. And then still keeping the denominations of twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, and a hundred and fifty, unless the council wants to drop off a hundred, if you want denominations. So during that, maybe a little compromise that we can, we can look at having both, um, opinions, um, to keep this program going.
Uh, just a little clarification before, um, I, um, I see, before I look to see if anyone else has questions. Would they, Phase Two, those who purchased cards in Phase One, would they be able to purchase cards? Would it feel like pushing the reset button for Phase Two?
No, no. So if you already purchased your two cards, you've already purchased your two cards. So this will only be available to new purchasers, or those that have purchased the second card. So I, I, I'd likely to see if you're a married couple, um, one spouse would get two cards, and then the second spouse can get two cards. So you, there could be four cards in one particular family if they have two email, different email addresses.
Uh, thank you for the clarification. I just want to see if anyone else has, uh, questions or comments? No questions or comments? Um, there was, um, the idea of not only implementing of Phase Two, but also of Phase Three. Um, I just wanted to see if you have any thoughts regarding that. I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, yeah, I like that as a, that, I'm, I'm okay with that as a compromise, since we're a little divided here. Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Snow.
Yes, I could live with it. I'm still a bigger fan of the, uh, keeping it the same way, but I, I could live with that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Proton Gassel.
Yeah, I like, I like the compromise, um, with the Phase Three. I could go either way on whether to change the limit to a hundred, a hundred dollars. Uh, but I definitely, I definitely like anything that extends the life of this program, because I think it needs time to be reflected.
And I don't know if this helps, but I really like the idea of keeping it, um, the same, but reducing it from a hundred and fifty to a hundred. Maybe, uh, for Phase Three, maybe that's something that would give you, knowing that once you've purchased your two cards, that pretty much you're done. But it makes it available to those who have not yet participated in the program, and, um, they could benefit. So, um, you know, with that said, I, I want to know if we provided you with the right direction, um, so that we can, um, provide the proper motion for the league. So, um, the motion is just to allocate the money. The direction to staff is to create, like, the pages moving on with Phase One, Phase Two. But I want to make sure I, I captured this part. Um, the City Council okay with the compromise that was proposed, where the first seventy-five thousand will be the current status quo program. Once that seventy-five thousand dollars is expended, we'll move into Phase Two, Phase Three. And Phase Three will be the, um, buy-one-get-one-fifty-percent. So my example was, buy a hundred-dollar gift card, get fifty-dollar, three dollars to spend in Lemon Grove. Is that, did I understand that correctly? And then, um, I know the mayor through out there on Phase Three topping the denomination at a hundred dollars. Um, I didn't hear anybody else say that, but I just want to check in with the council to see if that is the direction they'd like to go, or just keep the top seven at one-fifty.
So just to, to clarify, um, there, there's two options. One would be to cap it at one hundred, but still do the buy-one-get-one, um, in that, in that third phase. And then the other option would be to do the buy-one-get-one-half-off. Um, those are the two options? Okay. Of those two options, I prefer capping it at the one hundred, because the, and most people are buying the hundred and fifty, it'd be a fifty-dollar-ish saving to their, you know, a little twenty-five extra there, but I, I think that it would still achieve, um, Councilmember Gassel's goals, by extending it, but, uh, making it easy to explain to people, too.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Uh, yes, I, I agree. Thank you so very much.
And, um, Mayor Proton Gassel?
Yeah, no, and I think we've got something that we can all get behind with, with the idea of having Phase Three be at a hundred-dollar cap and giving the buy-one-get-one concept. So I'm, I'm going to say that that, that sounds fine to me.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so we have provided direction, um, with this particular agenda item. Um, we, um, made a motion to approve, um, the designated amount of funding to enter into Phase Two of the program, and so we have a motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll say that.
We do have a motion. We do have a motion, and it's second, and I'll ask for it to be first to call it all.
Mayor Proton Gassel?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion, Chair, to move.
Uh, thank you so very much. We do have, um, one additional item, uh, that was pulled from the present, a hundred, that was what, and a member applied to me. I believe that, um, Mayor Proton Gassel, uh, will have to step up, step out temporarily while we move through item one E, and so we'll just give him a few months to step away.
Um, Councilmember Gassel, could you just state for the record that you're recusing yourself because you live within five hundred feet of the project?
So I, I, I'm recusing myself. I live on McKnight Drive. It's definitely within five hundred feet of the project. And, and please, folks, uh, don't take too long to pull outside.
And while, uh, Mayor Proton Gassel is, uh, walking outside, uh, here, I know I applied to me, and so I'll turn this over to staff. Uh, in the meantime, I believe that we can move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is the Councilmember meeting's report. This section of the meeting is dedicated to all reports from the City Council about meetings attended at the expense of the City for places, boards, commissions, and city events. The report should be a brief summary of meetings attended in your capacity as a city official. As a reminder, we want to be careful to keep these comments brief and to stay within the values of the Brown Act. This includes matters that are not already attended tonight. And so each, um, council member will have a maximum of two minutes. And so I will start with, uh, Councilmember Snow.
So on February thirteenth, I had the opportunity to attend the Lincoln Cities Event. It's been a different, uh, city throughout the south, uh, southern region here are able to go meet together. It was the governor's update, as we got to hear what the governor, um, is working on in our communities, also to voice our concerns as cities, to make sure that we, uh, do not receive a bunch of unfunded mandates from the state level, uh, that are requiring our cities to do more than we can with, with no funding to do that. Um, I also attended, I, a meeting with the Chacona Federation about getting, uh, services for our homeless population and getting people housed. I also, on the thirteenth, went to the San Diego Evaction Collaborative, uh, to try and figure out solutions to our housing issues. And I also participated in a program, uh, to, uh, about the development of the Care Court, um, which is a program that's rolling out on the state level. So they implemented, San Diego County is going to be one of the first seven counties to participate in this program, and it's a program also to provide, uh, relief to severely mentally ill, uh, homeless population.
Uh, thank you so very much. Councilmember Mendoza?
Um, I attended the Sandag Transportation Committee meeting on February seventeen. Um, I've, I've, I'll, I'll send staff an email about this, but, uh, Caltrans brought up the, um, they have cycle two of the Clean California Grant. Uh, this is for beautification products. Um, it, there is a match, but the match, there's a possibility that the match can be waived. So, um, you know, I'm thinking, uh, beautifying downtown, um, area might fall into under, um, this, this grant. Um, we also discussed the, um, extending the youth opportunity pass, and, um, right now it's eighteen and under, and, um, we're, uh, we received, um, information about, um, extending it to twenty-four and under, which we include college students. Um, and I'm, I'm going to ask if I can just have an, uh, an extra minute, because this was a pretty important, um, meeting. Um, we, one thing we received a presentation on was the, um, completion of the State Route Ninety-four and State Route One Twenty-five interchange. Um, right now, you have to get off the freeway, um, in order to, um, go on Ninety-four. Uh, this causes a lot of congestion, um, on the city, you know, um, our city streets, air pollution. Um, when this project was completed, this was a segment that was not completed. However, Sandag, um, has, uh, they've done soil testing, where they're putting in this interchange, and my heart just sank, because they found, um, contamination of the soil. And so now, um, the funding doesn't cover, um, the further testing and, um, mediating the contamination of the soil, and it's right under where that, um, interchange would go. Um, but what Sandag is suggesting is that they, um, split the project into two phases, and so, and they're going to continue ahead with the first phase.
Um, thank you so very much. I, um, I know this is a very important topic, and because this is a very important topic, um, if, not only will I allow you to have at least one more minute, though you can set the timer for one more minute, but I think it's important to have Sandag come to our meeting to not only speak about, um, this particular, uh, topic, but also to clarify a lot of the misinformation that's being provided, uh, out in the public about, um, Sandag and about their projects and programs that they're offering. Uh, the best way to ensure that the right information gets out there to people is to bring them home. So, um, I'd like to have staff, I'll, uh, reach out to Sandag so that they can provide a presentation, uh, number one, of the project that Jennifer Mendoza, Councilmember Mendoza is speaking on, but also, um, the mileage fee. Uh, I think that's important. And so I will turn this over back to Mendoza for one more minute, and you may have the fourth.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll sum this up. Um, so the, so there, um, Phase One is going to be improvements to the One Twenty-five, um, just north of Spring Street, um, and that would be auxiliary lanes on both sides. So I don't know how many of you like get caught in that bottleneck there. Um, this is going to be adding lanes on the either side, and then the Mariposa Bridge, which crosses right there, is going to be, um, rebuilt, and that will be widened. Um, it'll also include, um, sidewalks, um, and, uh, bicycle improvements in that area as well. Then Phase Two will be the actual, um, interchange and all the, uh, soil work. And then the best news is that the projection is to finish Phase One fall of twenty-twenty-four.
Uh, thank you so very much. And again, um, Sandag is going to come back with more information, and hopefully the presentation as well, uh, so that, uh, a lot of the, the information touches real people here in the city of Lemon Grove. Um, and I'll turn this over to Mayor Proton Gassel.
Thank, thank, thank you. I, I attended the Mentis meeting for February. The big, the big issue is the city of San Diego closing off Park Avenue to create a promenade, uh, or set, or at, at specific times. And what's really interesting is-
And what's really interesting is that closing off streets encourages people to get out of their cars, and it's something people see as really positive to encourage pedestrians, but it's disrupting bus routes, which makes it harder for people to use public transit. So it's an interesting conflict between one group that is trying to get people out of their cars, and another group is trying to get people out of their cars, and coming from different directions. But it's the city's primary authority, and it's really just MTS letting people know it will disrupt bus service and possibly routing. I attended the East County Economic Development Council meeting for this month, and I told them that United Way has a program to help businesses in Lemon Grove offering their expertise and resources to help businesses. And they're very interested in working with us and working with the United Way. So that's really, really positive. I also wanted to note that this week, on the February 24th, I will be attending the Board of Directors of Sandeg on Friday. Last time I attended the Board of Directors, I got to cast a vote on the most important item in recent memory at Sandeg. So maybe this one will be equally exciting, hopefully exciting in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I appreciate you filling in on Friday as I will be in Artesia, California, representing, of course, the city on the board for the League of California Cities. And so I'll be there Thursday and Friday. Let's see. I attended the Sandeg Executive Committee meeting on Friday, February 10. That meeting actually went long. We did not have a Board of Directors meeting on that day. And I also attended the Sandeg Audit Committee meeting on Friday, February 10. Right now, the organization is looking for a new auditor. And we're in the beginning phase of setting that process in motion. And I also attended the Lemon Grove Food Distribution Event along with a few of the council members here, Mendoza and Snow. And from what I understand, we were able to provide groceries to over 200 families. So kudos to the organizations who work tirelessly to make sure that people are touched in a very meaningful way. And that completes my report. I'll turn it over to the RSC manager to provide a report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Proton Gasol, I want to clarify, you meant that urgently, not United Way, is that correct?
I totally meant that urgently, yes.
Oh, definitely. You're welcome. You're welcome. Other than that clarification, Madam Mayor, there is no report to give.
Thank you so very much. Let's see. We do have closed session tonight. So I will turn the meeting over to our City Attorney. But before I do, I just want to mention to everyone who's here that our next City Council meeting will be held on March 7, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. And I'll turn this over to our Attorney.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned to a closed session to discuss anticipated litigation under government code section 54956.9b4. Thank you.